Okay, everybody, it's 7 o'clock. Let's call the work session of the Silver Falls School District to order. Uh, no attendance? Okay, um, let's have Dustin welcome to come on forward.
We're gonna have our Pradam Jubilation Choir perform tonight and then I'll speak. And there under the direction of Julie Tortolot, our music teacher here.
My choir from Pradam will be singing two songs. First, America, and then sing with Jubilation.
We will sing with Jubilation. We will shout to the heart and dream. We will lift it higher than the heavens. With Jubilation, we will sing. We share the secret for the world is in our hands. Do you know who don't believe us? Just come along and you will understand. We will sing with Jubilation. We will shout to the heart and dream. We will lift it higher than the heavens. With Jubilation, we will sing. We will sing with Jubilation. We will sing. We will sing with Jubilation. We will shout to the heart and dream. We will lift it higher than the heavens. With Jubilation, we will sing. We will sing with Jubilation. We will sing. With Jubilation, we will sing. With Jubilation, we will sing. With Jubilation, we will sing. We will sing.
Okay, so I'm here to speak about Pradam and Central Howell tonight. Uh, Central Howell enrollment this year is 185 and we have 36% transfers. Just check that today. Uh, mostly kids from Salem make up the transfers. Some kids from Silver Falls, some from Jervis, a couple from Victor Point, and an Evergreen student. And, uh, when we were supposed to meet last Friday, our attendance, uh, was as follows. 38 students still have perfect attendance and we've had a lot of, uh, colds and flu coming through Central Howell and Pradam as well. But 80% of our kids have 95% or better attendance. So, and that's about as high as it's ever been, 80%. But 95% of the kids have 90% or better attendance. So, we've still got that group between 90 and 95%. Uh, this school year is screening by. Our parent club had this year switched to having some evening meetings and they're very well attended by fathers and mothers. And they also meet sometimes at 2:00 in the afternoon. If you recall, our parent club raised $6,713 in profits from Butterbraids last February/March. Butterbraids kicked off again this year, today. And they also raised over $18,000 in profits at Oktoberfest last October. Uh, we had an outstanding Christmas program at SHS to a full house. We have our Grandparents' Day coming up. It's very popular at Central Howell. We have our Spring Program coming up. Um, I think it's the 18th of April. And we have a talent show coming up in May that was so popular with the kids, it was two hours long. And we gave kids an option of being in a max of two acts. And this year, we're gonna have to start out with telling them they can only be in one and see where that takes us. Because that's a really long program for, uh, kids to sit through. Um, last week, our middle school OBOP team took first place at our Silver Falls competition. So now they're gonna go to Philomath High School on the 16th of March and compete in a regional. And, uh, hopefully they'll get to go to state, which is at Chomecada in April. Uh, this last Saturday, our 3rd through 5th grade OBOP team took 4th place out of 37 teams. They did not qualify for state, but 4th out of 37 was great. Um, we are, we are, uh, we have an after-school band this year. They performed at our Christmas program. They're gonna perform again at our Spring Program. Erin Carey, who lives and works out of Mount Angel, comes on Tuesday afternoons and she is our band director. And kids pay anywhere from $30 to $40 a month outside, or extra. And if a kid really can't afford it, then, uh, then we pick that up or it's just, it's just not paid. But the instructor gets paid, we just kinda eat it. Uh, but, uh, we don't want money to be a barrier to some student participating in band. Um, this summer at Central Howell, we are up for E-rate dollars. So Brett Milliken has been working on a plan. They're gonna put in some new cabling and some new hardware at Central Howell. And we're excited about that because our parent club really is anxious to get security cameras put up around the exterior of the building, in particular in the back of the gym. We'll put one high up in the corner of the interior of the gym, but, uh, mostly for the outside. Um, and we received a grant from, uh, we received a $1,500 grant. So we should be able to get 2 to 3 cameras depending on the cost. And then Parent Club is also gonna kick in some money for some security cameras. We just had a history of Central Howell night last Thursday night at Central Howell. We had about, uh, 40-plus people there. Anywhere from current students to people who graduated from Central Howell in the 50s. And, uh, we took them on a tour in two different groups. There was a large group that hung back in the gym and just wanted to tell stories and look at old pictures. And then there were two groups that roamed around the school. And we heard all kinds of stories with every classroom that we would go in. And that was a lot of fun. We're gonna do it again next February. Um, with our donor funds, we are very grateful both schools for the donor funds that our anonymous donor has given to our school district. Uh, we're, this, some of the things we're getting this year with donor funds at Central Howell is a new laminator, uh, a mobile whiteboard, uh, whiteboard for the LRC, teen benches, like those benches back there for athletics and PE and other uses. Um, speaker system for a classroom, area rugs, math manipulatives, shelving for the library so that we can put the primary books lower to the floor so the students can more easily access them. An air purifier for the basement, various PE equipment, round tables for classrooms, and various other small items. Any questions about Central Howell?
I have a couple for you.
Yeah.
Your attendance rate is wonderful. What do you attribute to that? I mean, is there something special that yours, that you implemented that your, you and your teachers have contributed to your school?
Uh, informing, informing the parents through our EdyLink periodically about our attendance. We do the safety calling, but all of our schools do the safety calling. Um, I think that, you know, we have great attendance here at Pradam School as well. It's just, the kids wanna be there, the parents get them there every day. And so, we're, uh, we're just benefiting from that really outstanding percentage.
And these numbers have gone up from previous years, clearly?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I'll bet you a couple of years ago, I would've been reporting to you that we're maybe, I don't know, 69, 72, 74%. So, and we have had a lot of kids, uh, sick, especially since coming back from Christmas break. Adults and children.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, Pradam School also has great attendance. Pradam School has 74 students this year. Now, Pradam is 58% transfer students. 40% of those kids come from Salem and another 18% come from Silver Falls. And so, 42% Pradam residents. And remember that Pradam's, uh, kindergarten students go to Central Howell for kindergarten and then they come back here for first grade. Uh, September to February 22nd, 11% of students have perfect attendance still. 70% of our students have 95% or better attendance. And 96% of our students have 90% or better attendance. Uh, I think this is the third time we have 8th grader Reed Gilliam. He, I think this is the third time he's qualified for the State Geography B from the National Geographic. And so, he's going to be going there, uh, to the state competition spring break. And he's one of three students, I guess, from Silver Falls School District who qualified to go to the State Geography B. We have our annual pancake breakfast on April 13th. Some of you have been to that before. That's the big fundraiser for the parent club at Pradam. Has that, uh, district newsletter come out yet about the pancake breakfast?
Yes.
It did, okay. Yeah, there was, so.
Yesterday before.
Yesterday, okay. So there's a nice article about the pancake breakfast. It's been going on at Pradam for many years and, uh, several families have taken a key role in making that happen every single year. Our boys' basketball team, little ditty Pradam School. Now, we usually combine with Evergreen, but Evergreen didn't have any boys' basketball participants. Pradam School's gonna get another banner up on the wall for 2019 Boys Basketball Champions, Co-Champions, with Victor Point. And Victor Point comes walking in here with, oh, I don't know, 24 kids, but you can only play five at a time. And, uh, I think we had eight, maybe nine boys. And, uh, we went eight and two. And beat Victor Point once, they beat us once, and then both teams lost to a different team for their second loss of the season. So, uh, but, the girls have a volleyball banner up there and they did have some, uh, some Evergreen kids on that. And then the girls also in 2016 were the girls' basketball champions. So, uh, the small schools do prevail. Our spring play, which is quite a production, Mrs. Tortolot, the parent club, she did school plays for a long time at Pradam and then it kinda went away. And then, uh, a couple of years, a few years ago, the parent club asked her if, um, she would do another school play. And they pay her, and it's not an extra duty contract, it's not a school-related, or it's not a school appointment thing, but they pay her an extra amount of money to do multiple practice sessions and put on a wonderful spring play. They're gonna do the Pirates of Penzance on May 30th and 31st here in this gym. And, um, and then, uh, the parent club also sponsored a t-shirt contest because they wanna get Pradam's name out in the public. So, uh, several kids submitted entries, pirate theme. And so, the winner of the pirate-themed t-shirt contest had, is having their design from Victory Prints, or they have a different name now, aren't they? Is it still Victory Prints in Silverton?
It's still Victory Prints, yeah.
All right, well, that design is going on a good quality t-shirt for parents and students and staff to purchase. Um, the big project for our donor funds is, we don't have, we don't have much space here at Pradam School and we have even less storage space. And so, a combination of donor funds along with some school money. Tomorrow, they're gonna break ground on an 18-by-22 cement foundation storage room. It's not gonna have lighting, electricity, it's just gonna have a big roll-up door and a regular door and just a shell, nice roof. And we'll put some, uh, parent club has said that they'll put in, uh, shelving around that we can probably buy from Costco or Lowe's or something. And, uh, so that's, we're gonna finally have some nice storage area. We have on the outside of this wall, one of those old steel cargo bins. But that thing is really awful and it's a real bear to get in and out of. And so, this is gonna have a nice ramp to where we can have, uh, chairs on chair trees, tables on carts, things can be nicely wheeled into the gym and wheeled back. And, uh, so that will be great. We've also bought various other small items. We bought the girls' basketball team, 10 brand-new basketballs, some circle tables for the little room, a dry erase board. But, uh, most of that money is going to, um, the storage room, which is badly needed. And so, permit excavation, rock slab, and a step-built construction is gonna be about $17,000. So, and Ben Johnson was very helpful in getting, uh, getting all that going. And we're gonna, permit took four days from Marion County and, uh, we're gonna break ground tomorrow. So, excited about that. Uh, kindergarten, I asked this morning. We have nine kids right now. We're looking for 24. We're telling anybody that's interested to go to the district website where all the forums are at, all the exact timelines and dates are at. So we're not, we're making sure everybody is getting the exact correct information. Um, this year.
Dustin, is that for both buildings?
That's both buildings, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
And, uh, and, uh, this last year was so strange because 22 of the kids were Pradam and Central Howell residents. That's very unusual. And then, the year before, we had numerous kids who wanted in and we had to cut it off at 24. So, I, it's hard to say, maybe this next year, we'll hardly have any Pradam/Central Howell kids and we'll have a whole bunch of transfers.
Dustin, did you have to turn any families away that were already attending that were transferred?
No.
Any siblings?
No, no. We've been able to accommodate families that have already had children in either school. Uh, in fact, this year, our first grade at Pradam only had two first graders. So we backfilled with six transfer students. Which is, that's just what we had to do. But it worked out great because we got them. Any questions about Pradam School?
Great report, thank you.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Dustin, if anybody needs, where's the bathroom?
Hey, the bathroom, you go right out this door and go a little straight and go to your left and go down in the basement and there's a men's room and a ladies' room down in the basement. The goal someday is to have a bathroom that's right here off of the gym. But, uh, construction costs are so high that that's gonna be a while.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dustin. Okay, first up, uh, next up is public comment. Would anybody like to address the board? All right. Nobody, okay. Saying that, moving and we'll move on to discussion items. Um, let's talk, uh, first up for our discussion items is our mid-year facilities update. Uh, Lauren Stanley.
Good evening, everybody.
Lauren.
Oh, Lauren.
Here were two documents that, uh, hopefully everybody received that went out.
Thanks for sending them early. That was nice to have.
Since the, uh, well, actually, I was behind and I didn't have it out. But then when the board meeting was done, so I used it.
Worked out.
All right, so I'd like to start off with the list of projects that were in the current year budget. Uh, just kinda update you and kinda give you an idea of where we're at, what's been done, what isn't done, um, and, uh, why that is. So, um, first of all, the, uh, we did a district lead paint survey using an X-ray fluorescence machine. Uh, that was completed. We now have a complete survey that basically tells us what areas in the district, walls, doors, et cetera, have lead paint. Uh, the good news is we found out that we had a lot less than I was expecting to see. Um, there's a lot less areas that we have to worry about that and impacting it. So, so that's always good to have when you're doing any kind of construction or repairs, et cetera. So, uh, we purchased a, uh, a lowboy trailer for the district scissor lift. Um, that was a safety issue. We were having a lot of problems with the tilt trailer we had and trying to load that scissor lift on the wood deck and it slid off a couple times and we almost had some significant injuries. So, that was, uh, an outstanding, uh, thing to have and prevent. Um, then I just had a place, uh, place item in here. And this was just for additional wood chips, et cetera, because we were doing a lot of work to the playgrounds in the district, uh, replacing all of the swing sets that were old and homemade as recommended by our insurance carrier pays, so. So, the other, uh, significant job we did that came out really good, uh, was the storm drain system out of Butte Creek. We had a lot of problems out there with, uh, water getting under the building into the return air duct ventilation system. Uh, we found a number of items, uh, where things were basically just draining into the gravel. Uh, all of the roof drains that were tied in were damaged, uh, where they went into the pavement. Um, and we also found one that was cut and was never patching repaired. And that was just dumping into the, the gravel. Uh, and that was all falling the gravel in under the building, so. Uh, and we, we were able to get some, some really good, um, additional work done there. The original plan was just to fix the storm drain, patch those areas. And, uh, we got such a great deal on repaving the entire playground area, area from the contractor that, uh, we were able to get that done. So, uh, huge improvement. So, great job. Uh, we got the, uh, one of the buzz-in entry systems on the front main entry, uh, completed there at Butte Creek also. Um, you'll see that we've gotten that completed at, at several sites. We ended up deferring the Butte Creek waterproofing of the exterior gym. And basically, we did that for a couple reasons. One of them was I couldn't find a contractor that was gonna be able to do it, uh, within the current schedule. Um, and we used some of those funds for the other projects that went over. So, like the additional paving work that we did, uh, the storm drain project. We also, uh, ended up replacing all of the, uh, the, uh, acoustical tile, excuse me, in the gymnasium with the walls. So, those were falling off the walls. We had a couple of fell off and when we tore them down, um, it just made more sense to go ahead and replace those. And we looked at the cost difference between painting and replacing them. So we used some of the funding for that.
Joel, are there, is there any existing leaks in the gym?
We did do some of the work, so there, there was leaks on the caulking joints, on the tilt-up panels. And so, I did have some of that work done so that we got it waterproofed so we didn't have water intrusion. Um, it's just that water's getting in through the surface of the concrete and then, basically, it freezes and it starts popping pieces off. And so, we've got a few areas that we had to have.
So this is exterior walls?
Uh, yes. So it's exterior.
Oh, okay.
Project.
Okay.
Uh, Butte Creek, we got the swing sets replaced there. Uh, that went well. Um, they also, of course, uh, had a project that's not listed on here, the PTC did, and got a lot of, uh, really neat, nice new playground equipment. So that was pretty exciting for the kids also. Pretty impressed with, with, uh, all the hard work that went into that and getting that done. Um, we did complete the installation of perimeter fencing around the playfield. So now the campus is, is basically fully enclosed with fence, uh, the whole back portion. And so, you have to go through the main entry in the office to gain access to the campus. Uh, and then you have the, Butte Creek replaced the acoustical wall panels in the gym. Um, we did some strategic siding replacement of some areas that were in really bad shape also. That was completed. Um, and then we'll move on to Central Howell, where we did complete installation of the, the main entry buzz-in door system there also. Um, another project there was, uh, installation and replacing of all of the, uh, security locks, classroom locks. Um, most of the locks were quite old, um, so they were failing. And, um, we wanted to put locks that were, uh, secureable from the inside of the classroom. So making a safer, safer classroom and then have it locked down. Uh, so, we did last year, uh, a bunch of radon testing, uh, throughout the district. Uh, there was a lot that came out that basically stated we needed to test all of our facilities for radon by 2021. Andy and I discussed it and we both felt that we wanted to go ahead and do that. We went ahead last year, tested all the facilities. We had some areas that came up a little bit high. Um, Central Howell was one of those and we installed a mitigation system over the summer. And, uh, we've since retested and, uh, Central Howell, the levels in Central Howell were significantly reduced. And it was only in the basement at Central Howell. So, that was the only location that tested with any, any high amounts. So, and then, uh, the Central Howell Gym is kinda the same thing. It's a tilt-up, uh, construction. Um, but we do have that one scheduled to be waterproofed, uh, as soon as school gets out, so. Um, and then I just, I had this Central Howell improve emergency e-gas lighting and I just kinda deferred that, to be quite honest. I just haven't had a chance to get to that. And we have, uh, uh, several buildings that really are, are needing some improvements there. Um, Central Howell got new swing set also. Um, and then at Evergreen, uh, we changed out all the locks there, installed the classroom security locks. Um, we had one location there that we had some, some higher levels that were above the action level for radon. And so, we installed a mitigation system there also. Um, that's working great. We've retested, uh, levels are significantly lower in that location now. And, uh, we replaced the stairs, uh, stair treads in the stairwell and the swing sets also. And, uh, that was about it for Evergreen. Mark Twain, um, we did, uh, some, some remodel work. It was minimal, um, in the boys' locker room to convert it into a, it's not really a classroom, uh, but they're using that as an instructional, uh, instructional area. Um, we basically tore out the lockers and we tore out the concrete curves that the lockers were sitting on and we carpeted the space and so.
So is there another boys' locker room then, or?
There's a boys' and a girls' locker room.
Yeah.
And there are restrooms there.
This is an additional one? I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, there's plenty of restrooms.
Oh, I see, okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, we also completed, uh, installation of all the perimeter fencing around the playfields. If you've driven by, there's a significant amount of fence there, but it's, it's all secured also. Um, we completed the buzz-in entry system there also. Um, installation of all the classroom security locks. Uh, also did some strategic siding placement on the gym building and then we repainted the gym building. Uh, that was completed. Um, and, uh, that's about it for Mark Twain. At Prattham, we changed out all the locks, installed all the classroom security locks. Working on insulation of the fencing. As you know, we had an adjustment to the property line, so that kind of had, I put it off, and I just haven't got a chance to get it back on the schedule. But we should have that completed in current year. The other issue is the buzz-in entry system, which there's a little challenge we've got to kind of work out with this campus, is that the front door is not going to work for the buzz-in entry. Your office is in the back. So, if we put a gate to secure the campus, really what we're looking at is we're trying to put the buzz-in on the gate. We think that's the only real option that's going to work for them to be able to buzz people in, because otherwise, you'd have to leave the gate open, which would allow people access into the campus. So, that's kind of what we're looking at, is trying to get the fence installed. We'll have a gate out here that would go between the building, the office building and the gym building, and that's what they would buzz people in there. If that makes sense. And they also got a new swing set out here. So, Robert Frost, we had some structural repairs that need to be done to the main entry awning. We actually had some glue-lam beams that were, they were basically brought it through and took the location off to the side. The way they were designed, they kind of hang off the side out in the weather, and the weather gets to them, and so they were in that shape. I think it might have been started by potentially a woodpecker at one point in time, and then made a hole, and then water started getting in there. Thank you. And we got the buzz-in entry installed there. That system is working well also. Completed installation of all the new classroom security locks. And with these classroom security locks, we also put in new exit devices where we had the old panic bar, the actual bar. Those were very cumbersome to try and lock and secure. So, if you key them down, you have to take an Allen wrench on both sides to key them down so they were unlocked, and it takes a long time to lock them. So, the new ones, you basically just stick the Allen key in and pop them, and they're locked. And so, it was also for lockdown purposes to make them as quick as possible to secure. We replaced the dishwasher there at Robert Frost also. That was a pretty significant project. It was very old, and we really couldn't keep it operating any longer. There's actually a couple more of those coming that are just at that point where they need to be replaced. Completed all the installation of perimeter fencing around the playfields, and we replaced the carpeting in not classrooms, just the corridors. So, that's a typo there. Apologize for that. So, we just did the corridors. That was some of the worst area. And then I figure we'll get to the classrooms if we can, another project. Sorry. Okay. And Scotts Mills, we got the buzz-in entry installed there. They also got a new swing set. We did some significant strategic siding and window replacement on a couple of the wings there. And then Silvercrest, we got the buzz-in entry system installed. We actually removed a swing set, and they didn't need an additional one, so we took, they had two. And the one that they had, the second one, was a good swing set, but it was put in a location that wasn't safe. So, we relocated it where it would be safer, and that's all we had to do up there. As well as installing the classroom security locks up there. And then we get to the high school. So, we have funds in budget for installing the buzz-in entry system, and we're still kind of working on the plan development, because that's a challenging campus over there. Actually, Wade and I have a meeting to discuss this further this week. But it's a challenging campus with the CTE building, exterior, and there's just a little bit of planning that needs to go into how this is going to work over there. So, that's why that hasn't completed yet. And the athletic field renovation and maintenance, I pretty much have some work that's planned here for the spring. Soon as it dries out a little bit, we're going to try to do some of that work. Middle school, we did get some strategic roof patching done. We patched a big area on the old 38 building that was budgeted for, that had been leaking for quite a while, and that worked out quite well. And then we've been patching some of the other areas. We've had several leaks, I will say, on the middle school in the course of the year. That is probably the oldest roof we've got, and as far as it's in pretty bad shape. We're going to have to replace that here coming up real soon, because we're running out of ability to patch those areas. Now, that being said, we're hoping that we find out that we got two more seismic grants that we applied for. So, we're really trying to use these seismic grants to the best of our ability to take care of some of these items. If they have to go in and put a new diaphragm decking, etc., then they have to remove the old roofing to get down there and do that. So, we'll find out in May if we got those two additional ones. We're still working on budget for the middle school project, so we'll find out what's happening with that and whether or not we're going to have funding for that roof to do the seismic project. So, one of my biggest challenges I've had this year is when it comes to replacing doors. And I've got door replacement projects at both Victor Point and the middle school, and another set that popped up that's not on here out of Butte Creek. And I've been working with multiple contractors trying to get quotes to get these replaced. And at this point in time, I still have not gotten anybody to be able to replace them. I'm very close. I've got two more contractors that have looked at it now, and I'm hoping to get quotes ASAP and be able to get these done as soon as school gets out. These are pretty significant projects. Victor Point is the main entry door, the back doors that go out to the playground area, and then the library doors. They're all, those are all really old wooden doors. We just can't keep them operational the way they are. I mean, they need to be replaced. And then the main entry doors at the middle school also are on the list. So, I'm hoping to be able to get those done. If for some reason I can't, then I'll have to re-budget for those for next year and kind of get them done. But I'm still hoping that we can complete it. Middle school, so that's, we're waiting on that also for the buzz-in entry installation. We need to put the new doors in in order to install the system on the new doors. It only makes sense to do that. We did have some specific ceiling tile that was abated in classroom nurses station and sensory room, and that was completed last summer. Victor Point, like I said, we're waiting on installing the buzz-in entries on the replacement of the doors. The installation of the perimeter fencing around the fields is basically scheduled, but when we started looking at that project, we found that there's the trees up there. We were concerned about the safety with all of those trees. We had several of those trees that have fallen up there that we've had to clean up. And so, in looking at it a little closer and assessing those trees, and I had a couple of armerists that went up and looked at, and they really felt that it was the safest thing to do is to remove those trees and to do it before we put up the fence, so that, you know, we didn't have a conflict. So, we bid that out, and those trees are in the process of being removed as we speak. I believe they started today. So, it's just a matter of that being completed, and then we can get our fencing out. And that concludes pretty much the projects that were on the list for current year. Does anybody have any questions about any of those?
No. Yeah, your staff's busy.
That's a great report. Thank you. The buzz-in entry system at the high school, I know that obviously it's not, you need to work out some details. Do you have any best guesses for when that might get completed?
Well, I'm hopeful after some discussion that we can do it in current year. I mean, I have funds in current year budget for it, so that's the plan, is to go and complete it in current year. They do have an access control system over there that's already installed. So, that being said, some of the stuff is already in place, which should make it a little bit easier. It's a matter of, I think a lot of it is figuring out the logistics and how it's going to work and how students are going to flow. And that's going to be the challenging portion.
Does that mean you have to limit some of the access doors? Or, I mean, how many doors are open now for someone to just walk in versus when you're done?
I think there's quite a few, but I think Wade would probably have a better answer than that.
He's busy reading.
There's two main doors right by my office that are open.
Yeah.
One door that goes to the CTE building, and then the arts, those are open at 8 o'clock. Those lock down, and then there's the gym. And there's several doors that we don't allow in, catheters and comms that are locked down.
Okay.
And then at 4 o'clock, we don't open, we open it later than the door opening, and then we close it earlier. So, there's less opportunity to be in there.
So, on a bigger campus like that, I assume there's a camera or something? How does someone buzz in each of these various doors? Someone comes that wants to get in, how do they get in?
Well, we put in cameras at each of the new installations at the other sites. There is already a camera that's in place currently at the main entry at the high school. So, it's a matter of figuring out how to route that and getting that on a display, so that they can see it.
Sure, sure. Okay. Most of the ones you write, most of the schools, you know, the door and the secretary is right there. I just assumed it was just a visual.
Yeah, no, we put cameras and monitors on the walls, so they can just look at the monitor if they can't, if they don't have line of sight. They can look at the monitor and see. And then there's also an audio button that they push, also has a little camera on it. And it has audio, so they can talk to the person. The one challenge we found that with that as far as the camera is you have to mount it so low for ADA that the cameras, yeah, it just shows somebody's chest pretty much. For the most part, it's not real good. But it's working great for the audio, and that's kind of what they need, is be able to talk to people and know when they're buzzing. The other handout is just basically, it's just kind of a brief roadmap as far as energy savings, performance contracting. Previous board meeting, I had talked to you guys about trying to do an energy efficiency project to replace all the lighting in the district, trying to make it a budget neutral, so something that's not going to impact the general fund budget of the district, but use energy savings, dollars, SB 1149 dollars, Energy Trust of Oregon dollars, business energy tax credit dollars, and trying to leverage all of that in order to make that project happen. And this is just kind of an update to give you an idea of where we're at. The energy savings performance contract we're working with has already come in. They did the high-level look. That was initially what I presented to you, was kind of a rough estimate of what they thought we could do budget-wise. Figured out the potential savings, etc., qualifying step, made sure everything was going to qualify. We're utilizing a cooperative purchasing agreement to work with them, which is the ONE GPA. And where we're at right now is they are in the process of doing the mechanical audit. So, they're deploying data loggers at the high school, and they're putting this on mechanical equipment in classrooms, etc., so that they can track what's happening and see basically what potential there is for energy savings. And that's important for them, because they will guarantee our energy savings, but they need to know that they're ahead of time. So, they're doing that at the high school. Tomorrow morning, we're meeting at Mark Twain, so we're looking at the high school, Mark Twain, Robert Frost, and Silvercrest. And the reason we targeted those sites is because they are currently, they have a DDC control system. The high school is fully direct digital control system. The challenge is it's technology and it's 10 and 20 years old. So, unfortunately, we can't get parts for a lot of the stuff at the high school for the control system. This is a huge amount of money, and this is why I wanted to target that specifically in this energy project and tie it in with this lighting project, because it's a lot of money for the district to come up general fund and to budget to replace that control system. So, if we can tie it in with this energy efficiency project and leverage that savings and use that as part of this project, it's going to be a real plus for the district. The other sites we're doing also, they have, they're on an older control system than the high school, if that gives you an idea. They're still functional. I will say that the high school will be the priority when we get to our final budget. We're looking at how much money we actually have to spend. The high school will probably be the priority to get those controls changed out, because then it's going to be less money to integrate the other systems. So, if we have a failure, let's say at Robert Frost, Robert Frost is a, it's a minimal system. All we're really doing is we're telling it start, stop, outside air temperature, we're controlling the boilers and the boiler set points. But most of that system is actually that controlled on pneumatics. So, it's a really old pneumatics air operating system. Anyway, so that, Silvercrest, Mark Twain, we have minimal controls. That would be much easier for us to absorb that cost if something happens and it fails and we have to, you know, spend some dollars to take care of it. So, at any rate, they're going to put together some better numbers after they get done with these audits, and we'll be coming back to you to update you again to show you where things are at and what it looks like, and hopefully have a good project. Any questions on that?
How long will you have a reported audit, you think?
I'm guessing it's probably going to be a couple months. We are hoping to get started and push this along and hopefully be able to start on some lighting this summer. So, another little highlight that's going on, as you're aware, we received a TAP grant for facility assessments. We hired BBL architects to do those facility assessments. We toured all of the facilities in the district, pretty much almost every single space that we went into. They, that's all, all the site visits are completed, and at this point, they've put together a kind of a rough draft that I'm looking at and reviewing. But we hope to have that done by the end of the month and have a final draft on that. So, that went pretty well. Another little update, high school parking lot. So, we have all of our required permits for that finally. So, that's basically ready to go, but at the same time, we're waiting on weather. It's really wet over there. We've got standing water in several places. So, basically, as soon as it dries out enough, and we're looking at tentatively, possibly over spring break, if weather permits. So, that's good news. Mark Twain Seismic, that project, we completed 100% design. Plans went out on February 13th. We had three contractors that showed up at the voluntary pre-bid walkthrough last week, and bids are due this week on March 6th, so hopefully we'll get some good bids and be able to get that squared away and scheduled for this summer. Silverton Middle School, the gym seismic project, we're still working on budget on that with the CMGC, trying to determine where we're at on that, and we have a meeting scheduled for next week on that. And I think that pretty much concludes all the significant stuff. Lots of little stuff. Lots of little stuff.
Yeah, good.
Thank you for that.
Actually, one quick question.
Absolutely.
We had three contractors show up for the walkthrough, does that mean saying that there's a turnaround in availability of contractors?
It depends on what, I guess, what craft, so that's what I would say. I think it's pretty good, but we've had pretty good turnout on jobs before, and even last year, we had a pretty good turnout on the Robert Frost seismic project. One of the contractors that showed up is the contractor that performed the Robert Frost seismic project, so, yeah, I think it's pretty good. Yeah, I think that things are going to pick back up this summer and it's going to be challenging again, though, and there's a lot of bond work going on out there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, for your voice, all the family in the six, so.
No problem, thank you. Okay, next up is policy review, policy DBEA on the budget committee. This came up again, mainly because a lot of the, well, a lot of the discussion around our last budget committee appointment, and I guess, and we thought we'd bring it up to discuss it, see if anybody wanted any changes. I think it's fine, I think it's fine as it is. I understand some of the concerns about how it went down, and I heard, you know, I personally just heard those concerns loud and clear, but it's, you know, to try to have a policy that's going to have it, I don't know, perfect, I think it's fine as it is, so, then I don't see any change, I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts.
I agree with you, it came to the same conclusion.
Yeah, I don't think there's any changes either, I don't think, kind of, it's fine the way it is, you don't want to make it too confined.
Yeah, confined is a good term, but I mean, I heard the concerns, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I think those concerns might continue to surface with this policy, that those two sentences at the end of the paragraph below one and two are not very clear, I guess, and I don't know that policy needs to be super specific. On the other hand, I also think it might be painful to try to change it, so, I guess, I'm kind, that's where I'm at, I think those two sentences, they're not, they're not super clear, and I think that people will continue to have similar concerns that they've had because they're just, they can be interpreted many different ways, I think.
I agree.
Were you in favor of, I guess, making it less ambiguous or even just removing ambiguous statements, or were you wanting to make it more clear? In other words, less, like, striking the, it will be the usual practice to, da-da-da, striking that, or making that simply more clear?
I personally don't have any preconceived notions, I wanted to hear what other people had to say, I guess I'm open to lots of different things, I just know that's the problem spot.
Right, yeah.
One thing that comes to mind for me, though, is, I don't, you don't, you don't want to make it too specific as a policy, because there was, you know, for many years in this district, we had trouble finding anybody to serve on the budget committee, and I think some of the reasons, some of the reasons we had a couple issues this last time was just because of the political climate in our world today, I think. And so, you know, we could get to a time where we have trouble finding somebody to be on the budget committee again, and if you have your policy too specific, then you're going to be in a world of hurt with that, too. So that's, that's just my two cents on, I had thought of that. I mean, it's only been the last couple go-arounds where we've had more than two or three people interested in being on the committee, so.
Well, I think that's, that points to the idea of an effort will be made to solicit applicants, well, we, there hasn't been a need to solicit, really, I mean, just the idea that, let's make sure everybody knows that this position is available, and we've had plenty of applicants, so, and I agree with you, I hear you, I think specific makes, ties your hands sometimes, so, I hear you on that.
Leave it the way it is.
Yeah, I'm okay, like I said, I heard the concerns they registered with me, but I don't, I think it caused more problems by just, by changing it.
Yep.
Ron?
Okay.
I agree with you, Jennifer, on the thought process, and it's going to come up again, I guess we can review it again.
Well, I think what came out of our last go-around is the idea that more discussion around it, and more discussion about interpretation of what this says ahead of time is important.
And make it clear.
Yeah. And just hear each other, because a different board is going to interpret it differently, and so I think that's probably a key point.
Yeah.
Very good.
We'll just look at it again.
Leave it as it is and do better next time.
Exactly, we'll just make it a lot more clear.
Do better next time. Okay, yeah, good, all right, no change. Okay, next up, board goals for development of the 2019-20 fiscal year budget. Andy gave us a summation of some of the discussions we had, of the topics we had, as we talked about earlier in the year, and what our goals were for last year. I thought this was a good list. Where, my only comment, I mean, I like these goals, let me see. The ending fund balance. We're currently at, let's see, where do we, so we're going to add a 5%, the current budget, and that reads by, this current budget at the end will have, will have 5% of it saved to add to our reserves, is that how that reads?
Yeah, if, let me comment on that a little bit, because there is some distinction that needs to be shared. First of all, Steve Nielsen apologized for not being here tonight, he's been ill since over the weekend, and just isn't quite back to full recovery yet, so, but what I would share with you, and for the sake of the public that's here tonight as well, in the past, we've had a goal, the board has approved a goal, budget ending fund balance minimum of 6% of general fund revenue, and I think it's really important for you to recognize that that's your budgeted ending fund balance. I actually gave you a document that I prepared today that showed what the actual ending fund balance was at the end of each one of those fiscal years, those are audited balances per five percentage. And so, as an example, last year, you, your budgeted ending fund balance was 7.9%, but the actual ending fund balance audited at the end of the 2018 school year, or fiscal year, was 14.7%. Keeping in mind that you budget contingency, that principals, and we as a district budget X number of substitute days, and if it's a very healthy year for staff, they don't use the substitute days, I mean, there are so many variables when you consider budgeting for a school district, that generally speaking, your actual ending fund balance is going to be, in some cases, twice as much as your budget, maybe even more, that's just the nature of the business. It would be horrific, but it's potentially something that could happen, it would be horrific, though, if you ended up with your actual fund balance at the end of the year at your budgeted fund balance. I mean, that, your budgeted fund balance is the lowest that you believe, and you as a board feel comfortable saying, these are your reserves, this is what you have in savings, if the bottom fell out of everything and you needed to dive into your revenue in order to keep this very complex district afloat. So that's, I just wanted to create that distinction for you, first of all. I'm going to use this document that I prepared today just to draw your attention to a couple of things, so if you'll take a look at dating back to 2008, you can see in this district actually prior to that, you've had as much actual fund balance, as much as 18.9, 17.2% going back to '06, '07, '08. But take a look at what happened in 2009, when we were hit with the recession, and actually, school districts generally follow about two years after economic downturns like that, so you'll see from 2009 through 2014, there's been a fairly notable year-by-year drawdown of your reserves. In fact, the low point is 2014, and I remember that year, year ending fund balance budgeted amount was about 4.5%, maybe even closer to 4%. That was a pretty tough time for you. But what the board shared at that time, and what I'm going to encourage you to share at this time, is that this was a predictable, this predictable drawdown of your reserves over literally five years, that did one thing, and this is the most significant, it kept the impact away from kids. If you take a look at many of the metro area school districts, you'll see that the impact on kids was significant. At the same time that we were drawing down reserves to keep staffing relatively neutral, they were adding furlough days, they were having significant layoffs in districts that didn't have the kind of reserves that you've had over the years. And so, Tom, I'm going to get back to your comment now, Steve and I believe that with the impact of the new curves rates, which is an automatic $750,000, we estimate per annual, we have some major funding purchases coming up, you're going to see some large district-wide curriculum purchases in teaching and learning, we also have a collective bargaining year with teachers, we don't know what that's, how that's going to turn out, but we want to make certain that we treat our teachers right. There are still a number of unknowns, and so we believe that it's fair for you to, in the spirit of anticipating the curves impact especially, that you be prepared over the next few years to draw down your reserves once again. They're built up to nearly 15% right now, so over the course of the next two, three, four, maybe five years, predictably, we were suggesting that you consider drawing those down again, with the primary purpose of keeping the impact away from kids. So that's where the 5% comes from, Tom.
Okay, so at this rate, you're anticipating a drawing down of it?
Absolutely, yeah, in order to balance the budget this year with, and we're relying upon the governor's 8.95 or about $9 billion budget, that you're going to have to use some reserves in order to keep your currency.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, but I guess the problem I have with that is we haven't had the economic downturn yet.
Right.
I mean, so.
Well, but the, I'm sorry, it's not the economic downturn, it's the impact and that the costs are going down.
Right, well, so, I mean, you know, we talk about, you know, '08, '09, after it drawdown, but that was after, you know, here comes the brutal recession.
Right.
And we haven't experienced that yet, so.
We haven't, you're right, it's a different variable then, we weren't dealing with the high curve rates, at least like, relatively like we are now.
Right.
But let's hope you don't get two for two, let's hope that we don't get the economic downturn two years from now, because then we will be talking about some pretty significant issues in this district.
Okay.
Or three years, I mean, the economic forecast came out the other day, and the economic forecast for the state of Oregon was actually very positive, I'm not certain if you read that article in the Oregonian or in the Seismic Journal, but the state economists did say that there will be very likely, just based upon the cycle of economics, is that as a country anticipating some economic, hints of economic downturns, or indicators of economic downturns, within the next two to four years. And when it happens at the federal level and the state level, remember, you're funded nearly 90% by what the economy is telling you, so if it starts going south, then we start feeling it in the school district.
Yeah, I just, you know, you touched on the curves, on the curves thing and how that's, oh my gosh, where did I wrote that? I listened to, there's a, just, you know, we're talking about, there's a podcast I listened to about in January on OPB, Think Out Loud, January 10th, and so Think Out Loud, and they really did, it's about 50 minutes, and they really explain, they do a great job of explaining this, the curves problem that, that the state's in, so if anybody wants to educate themselves on that, I advise listening to that, because it's not a problem that's going to go away, and it's going to be, and it's going to get worse, so I'm, that's why I'm kind of concerned about maintaining our reserves. Anyway, that was the thing on the goals that stuck out, and we keep that as high as we can.
I think Steve, if Steve were here, Mr. Chairman, if Steve were here, and I surely won't oppose as well, I just truly believe that the impact is going to, going to be felt that if we plan to budget for a little bit of a use of your reserves, that it'll help, we could truly maintain your fund balance at budget 6%. We could do that, we're going to have to figure out some way to do that as we especially plan our district-level budgets, but that, we could manage.
Okay, I just, I'm okay, I just wanted to reassure, reassure that concern.
Sure.
All right, that was, that was the one that stuck out for me, anybody else have any, have any things?
We covered that, so many.
I think that, I like them, I think they look good. Andy, just one thing, though, I wanted to bring up, we've had a lot of discussion about music, and I kind of like what you guys brought up at the work session in January about maybe the possibility of maybe starting some after-school music programs, how would that affect something like this for the budget in general?
We would have to, I think, if you're referring to these recommendations from the work session, and so the third bullet says, district-supported after-school music or band opportunities, regional or district-wide opportunities, and then feedback needed from the community, the school principals are obtaining some feedback, or have been obtaining some feedback over the course of the last month or so, about how something like that would be received. My estimation is that if we were to offer something like that after-school program, district-funded, district-wide, we'd be talking very likely the equivalent north or south of a full-time equivalent, full-time teacher, and then transportation. And at this point, we're budgeting full-time teacher equivalents at about $102,000, full benefits, everything, and music, since that would be route busting of some sort, we'd be able to get that 70% reimbursed, so I would estimate around $120,000 to $140,000 to help kick something like this off. We could surely look at that, again, it would be a voluntary opportunity for music, regionally or district-wide around the school district, after-school band and choir programs. So if you have an interest in that, I'm surely not opposed to it, and I think you heard that even during the conversation, I think part of, part of the telling would be, how much participation would you get? And we don't, won't know that until we offer something.
Well, and it could even be paid to play, too, I mean, it could be just like a sport. Could, I mean, you pay for every sport you play.
Yes.
Yeah, offset some of the costs.
And I would want your feedback on that as a board, about how we should approach that.
I think we should keep it in the back of our mind, at least, just, you know, it'd be a small step to in that direction possibly, but, and I think we need to approach it with small steps, but maybe wait and see where we end up after bargaining and things like that.
I guess I'm not as super enthused about an after, you know, district-wide after-school, just because, again, the equity piece and more participation, to me, the whole, for me, the idea of having more music would be to get more kids participating, and I think maybe if we could wait and figure out something more creative that impacts more kids, I would be more in favor of that. But yeah, I'm not in a rush, like you said, I think right now is not necessarily the timing.
I think I tend to agree about the timing, there's a lot of factors on it, too.
Yeah.
And I want to see what the final numbers look like, we've got a lot of variables still, I think, hanging up in the air. It, but I agree with you, I'm not super enthused about an after-school option, especially one that would require somebody to go central, you know, I think it complicates things, but, you know, I, I think one of the things that we've struggled with is that it's, it's complex for a lot of reasons, right, there's questions about what we actually do, and you guys presented, I thought, were the good information at the last work session on what we do. And then I think there's a secondary question of what we think we should do, if that's different or not, and then I think there's a third question of what we can do, whether that's possible or not, right? So if we kind of break it into those three questions, I think we know the first answer, thoroughly have a good answer. I think the second one is the one we haven't really discussed particularly, I mean, not really, and I think the question of can is largely based on a lot of factors that are not even yet entirely known. I mean, that's my two cents. I think, I think the timing is definitely not, I mean, we can't just sit here right now and say we would do something different, they don't even know what's possible. So that's my two cents on the music, I still would like to see trade-off discussions, I think there's, I think that's a piece I haven't seen yet, is sort of, you know, even if we came up with what we'd like to do and how much might it cost? Like whack-a-mole, right, I mean, something's got to, I mean, there's, it's a finite budget, so. I mean, something's got to, I mean, there's, it's a finite budget, so, you know, we can't, we're not going to invent the money, so, that's, I don't know, I'd love to have more board discussion about the, if we think we'd like to do something different than what we do today, what is that, what does it look like? And if the answer is, there is no majority that think we ought to do anything different than we do today, then that's down, so what's up? My two cents?
Well, I agree with Jennifer and with Jonathan, and I don't need to reiterate everything, so I'm just going to support that thought process and go from there, so, thank you.
I tend to agree. Okay, anybody have any more input on the board goals?
Well, just maybe the last time, music, you know, and I still think we're all over the budget, you know, and then the balance, so we still have to wait and see. And then, go ahead and think about music, I think it is imperative to, as Tim suggested, maybe take away the after-school program, do a thorough analysis, imperative of offering music during the school days, how does that impact, take the time away from mandatory working in our existing curriculum, because there could be some trade-offs, and if it's even possible, is it feasible? But, I mean, I think we can, maybe having ourselves in that respect, so, I mean, once the members come out, get understanding of the path that's in front of us, then we can start making these incremental steps, increase dialogue with levels of schools, and make a thorough analysis based on how we find that data.
Yep. Good discussion, I guess we're kind of interviewing nothing immediate, but just keep our.
To keep discussions open.
Keep thinking creatively.
Mr. Chairman, you'll have these board goals as an action item at your regular session.
Next Monday.
Next Monday, yeah, so you'll have an additional opportunity to discuss these and take action. Yeah, good stuff.
All right, thanks. Okay, well, that concludes our regular session, we're now going to adjourn to executive session under ORS 192660 EF, to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection. Thanks for coming. All right, let's return from executive session to open session. Does anybody have any further business? Okay, seeing none, meeting adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.